Go ahead and call our meeting, August 14th, order, roll call please.
Councilman Johnny Blunt, Councilman Jason Hood.
Here.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard.
Here.
Councilman Lamar Marshall.
Here.
Councilman Mike Williams.
Here.
I am number one in public hearing.
In order to authorize the mayor to enter into a purchase agreement, act of sale and related documents with Anthem Investments LLC for the purchase of 107 North Cherry Street for the price of $225,000, Lacy Landry.
This is the official ordinance and the contract to enter into an agreement with Anthem to purchase this property. This was allocated in the budget for this fiscal year and we would like to move forward with it at this time. The purpose is to purchase the property and then to demo the building to provide additional parking for downtown and expansion of the Morrison Alley area.
Do we have an appraisal done?
We did have an appraisal done. And the price is according to the appraisal, so it is not, we can't pay more than the appraisal.
Is there a copy of the appraisal available for us to review tonight?
Sure. I think, Mayor, is it on your desk?
Appraisal.
Appraisal. Oh, Andre has it, Mayor.
In the meantime, do we have any other questions for Lacy? Any public comments or questions? Councilman Marshall, you okay?
Yeah, I'm just figuring my way through.
Alright. Alright, we're now moving to our regularly scheduled meeting, roll call please.
Councilman Johnny Blunt, Councilman Jason Hood.
Here.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard.
Here.
Councilman Lamar Marshall.
Here.
Councilman Mike Williams.
Here.
Councilwoman Beard, would you do me some prayer please?
O'Heaven and Father, thank you for another opportunity for us to gather together to do the business for the city of Hammond. We pray, O'Heaven and Father, that we do everything right and in order. We pray, O'Heaven and Father, that we are fair, we are just, and that we listen to those who placed us in this position. We come thanking you, O'Lord, for everything that you are doing for us. We ask a blessing of on each and every citizen in the city of Hammond. We pray for the city of Hammond, the state of Louisiana, and the United States of America. These are our blessings, we ask in the name of your precious Son Jesus, to God be the glory. Amen.
Councilman Marshall, would you do me some prayer?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with no end, just for.
Do we have any council reports?
Mr. Vice President, I do have a report, or actually, I want to introduce to the council and to the citizens of Hammond Garrett Sanders. Garrett Sanders is a junior at Hammond High, magnet school. I've known Garrett since he was in the fourth grade with my son, and Garrett is with the 4-H club, and he has a presentation for the council, and I think he has his family with him tonight too, right?
Yes, sir.
Can you give us your address for the record?
49282 River Road, Hammond. Alright, good afternoon, council, first of all. My name is Garrett Sanders, I'm a junior at Hammond High and a dedicated member of the 4-H program. I've been at 4-H for five years, going on my sixth. Throughout these five years, I've held the offices of secretary, vice president, and president of both my school and parish clubs. I've also served on the state 4-H citizenship board for the past two years, and I'm currently on the state 4-H executive board. Over the years, 4-H has taught me many skills required to be successful in life, such as responsibility, organization, leadership, and such as that. But I've come to realize that one stands out above the rest: volunteerism. Service projects, such as the one that I'm presenting to you today, play a key role in helping a community thrive. I've done many service projects throughout 4-H, most of them being short-term, simple service projects. Because of this, I wanted to do a long-term project that helps the community in more ways than one, and can also be expanded upon. That is where the blessing boxes come in. Alright, what I'm about to hand you is a detailed report of the presentation and on the blessing boxes.
Thank you.
Alright, according to the United States Census Bureau, Hammond has a poverty rate of 32.2 percent. This number is way too high, in my opinion. Therefore, I decided to do something about it. Blessing boxes are small boxes that are placed on either private or city property. The motto is, take what you need, bring what you can, and above all, be blessed. That is the basic principle of the boxes. They will be filled with non-perishable foods and/or hygiene products. They will be filled with all of the things like canned foods, rice, beans, and stuff such as toothbrushes, toothpaste, soap, all stuff like that. People who need these items can come and get them, and people who are privileged enough to donate can bring anything like that. The box is essentially meant for any people going through financial troubles, whether they be homeless or just trying to feed their family until their next check arrives, they can come and take what they need. I've procured funding from Modern Woodman, a nonprofit organization who gives back to the community for doing funding service projects such as this. They have given me the funds to build the first two boxes, as well as fill them with the products people may need around the city. Now, council members, this is where I will need your help. I would like to be clear to put the first two boxes in downtown Hammond. The first being in front of the police department, and the second being on the grounds of the courthouse.
Why'd you choose those areas, Garrett?
Because, first of all, they're kind of open, they can be monitored by the police and cameras such as around the courthouse and everything else, and people know where those are at. So Hammond is a really open town, so people can just come walking by, and if they need something, they can see it and be like, oh yeah, I need that. And then, it's also open for people unless, so they feel safe to go up there and put stuff in. Alright, the first two will be my responsibility. I will maintain the quality and the quantity of the products, as well as do weekly data reports to determine the success of the two boxes. My goal is to really get the community involved. Hopefully, individuals or businesses will see the good that these boxes do and want to start their own, like around the city and around Tangier Parish. This is where the expansion happens, and it all depends on the success of the first two boxes. In Saint Tammany Parish, there are 13 successful blessing boxes and 13 more on the way. My contact over there said the boxes quickly took off with no vandalism or ransackings reported, which were my main concerns in the beginning. Their success only gives me more hope that our blessing boxes will take off just as quickly and successfully and make even more of a change in the community. Even if only one family gets fed, the boxes will still be a success and their purpose fulfilled. These boxes are the future of not only Hammond's, but all of Tangier Parish's changes for the better, and it all starts with us. Thank you all.
Anybody have any questions for Garrett?
One, if he brings something to put in the boxes, is he accessible, I mean, so of course, is not locked?
No.
And as long as it's something like canned goods, or like you say, hygiene products, where everybody should know that to put them in the basket?
Yes.
And Mayor, one of the reasons why Garrett and I were talking about it, and he suggested the area around the police department, or, you know, just because we thought that it would be less likely for theft to happen there, if it was gonna happen, and it might be some, not necessarily a mandate from the law enforcement to monitor, but at least have a little bit more, a better presence, better presence. So versus somewhere out of sight, out of mind, it could become a bigger deal, so I thought that was a good idea on his part. So I think that's a good thing that we can do, and hopefully we'll be able to find ways to support your effort.
Yes, sir.
Now, you brought your family with you?
Yes, sir.
Did you want to introduce your family to the council, to the mayor?
I have my father right there, Blaine Sanders.
Could y'all stand up and...
My stepmother right there, Ms. Amy Wall. My mom, Dawn Cobrith, and my stepfather, Shannon Cobrith.
And so...
And then I also have my 4-H agent, Ms. Megan Roberts, and her daughter, Tindley.
Alright.
I commend you on what you're wanting to do. Obviously, when you're building, you're gonna make them low enough to be handicapped accessible.
Yes.
But that's, I've seen it in Saint Tammany, we had it on the news a few times, and it seems to be working. There was a little controversy about it, it was in the neighborhood that didn't really care for it, but so, it sounds like you chose some pretty good spots.
Would we have to have any type of collaborative agreement signed for allow that to happen on city property, if that's something we can work through, and then maybe, if that's, if the council, or if we have to pass a resolution, I don't know how that's gonna work, but, I know we can't do it tonight, but if we can think through that, whatever you guys need us to do from an administration, I'm sure that...
Yeah, I'll look into it.
And then we'll have to probably get a resolution to some type of collaborative agreement to, or something?
Depends on what it says, but if you do, we'll certainly turn it back to the council.
Okay. So then, so basically, I guess, at that point, we would have to kind of officially allow, you know, give you the authorization to do that, and then once you get that from the mayor or from the administration, then you should be able to go forward with your project.
Yes, sir.
Okay, congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Good job, Garrett.
Thank you.
Louise Bostick, 112 Elm Drive. I just wanted to say how much I admire your project, and you might think, we have some community gardens in neighborhoods, and this might be a likely place for you to expand. If you have any questions, I sort of coordinate one of those community gardens, and there's another one over in this area. But congratulations, it's a wonderful idea, and we'd like to help any way we could.
You guys are welcome to stay for the entire meeting if you want to. Most people leave afterwards, but if you guys want to stay, you're welcome to.
Any further council reports? Mayor?
Good news on the sales tax end of year numbers. June's come in, and we're 657,663 dollars over budget. So that is now the sales tax fund, and so that's good news for the fiscal year. Also, next Saturday, August 25th, there will be a STEM program at Southeastern and Pennington Center. Please bring your families, if you know any children that may want to go, encourage them to be there, it's a good time, it's from 10 to 2. So that's a good event. And a little early in saying, but September 8th will be our first play day in Zumeri Park, and it's coordinated between Chapapila Park, Ryan Barker, and also Desiree Doty and her team with the Recreation Center to start, including Hammond playgrounds and what's going on in parks, and also have some mentorship out there, and it'll be coordinated between the two parks, Chapapila and Recreation Department. So the starters will marry, I think the second one will be Martin Luther King will bounce to different parks on different weekends, so that should be exciting for our kids in those areas to be able to walk to and have a good time. Thank you, sir.
Recognition of new businesses, we have Andre Stolier.
Stolier.
With Access Health Louisiana.
Thank you, sir, I'm, and I'm from, I'm sorry, Andre Stolier, 4302 Fountain Blue Drive, New Orleans, Louisiana. Most people assume it's Stolier, 'cause I'm from New Orleans, so I appreciate that. First of all, I want to thank you all for having me here, and also just make a quick comment that, you know, the work that I'm gonna talk about, and the work that I'm very passionate about, it's so encouraging to see someone like Garrett Sanders over here bringing something of his own volition to this body, and this body so quickly, working with him, you know, I travel around quite a bit, and I used to work with the legislature, and I now have the blessing of, I get to go update local governmental bodies without asking for things most times, and letting them know the great work that we do, and it's just really encouraging to see something like that unfold. Thank you all for having me here today. Like I said, my name's Andre. I work for Access Health Louisiana, which has the Tangier Parish Community Health Center. It's the federally qualified health center right by the I-12, I-55 interchange. I'm here today because we believe that providing community health care requires the support of community leaders, and it's important to us that those who are really integral in their communities, whether they be a city councilman, a parish councilman, or a state legislator, know what we do and what we can provide for their constituents. Our clinic was established in September of 2015. It's been a member of our family ever since then. Our organization, Access Health Louisiana, provides primary care, behavioral health, and more to about 42,000 patients in clinics and school-based health centers throughout 10 parishes, mostly in the southeast Louisiana region. And at the Tangier Parish Community Health Center, we provide primary care, behavioral health, and I'm sorry, a couple of the services to approximately 1,700 patients on an annual basis. Our mission at Access Health is to improve the health of the people we serve, and we serve the entire community, regardless of race, creed, religion, orientation, gender, or even the ability to pay. Serving the community means more than just health care to us as well. Most recently, we did our second annual Supplies for Success event here in Hammond, where, or actually, I guess we're right outside of the city limits, where we gave away, I think about 500 backpacks last year in school supplies, and this year, we gave away school supplies to about 400 students, and we look forward to doing more such events like that. As a federally qualified health center, we accept almost all insurances, including all the Medicaid plans, and we also offer discounted services to the uninsured. You can see a provider at Access Health or the Tangier Parish Community Health Center for as little as $10, and we never ever turn someone away for care. We also offer our discounted prescription pharmacy program through the federal 340B program. We have a pharmacy ourselves that delivers across the state at no charge to a patient. If you're uninsured, there's a discount. We also contract locally, because we know some people like to go to their community pharmacy, whether it's independent or to CVS or Walgreens, so we can also provide those discounted pharmacy services through our local community partners, partnerships. Our patients are very familiar to you, they're your friends, your families, your neighbors, and your constituents. Our clinics serve as the primary source of health care, and without it, many of them would probably seek care in the emergency room. Half of our patients, I'm sorry, a little more than half of our patients at this clinic are Hammond residents, a number which continues to grow each year. 23% are children, 65% are female, 74% are on Medicaid, 8% have commercial insurance, 4% Medicare, and about 15%, or about 250 people have no insurance and no form of payment at all, I'm sorry, not no form of payment, but no payer source for their health care, so it's on them. For those, we provide our services on what's called the sliding fee scale, so that's why we're able to see people for as little as $10, and sometimes honestly even less. So it's part of our federal mandate and our mission and what we're passionate about. Want to clear up a quick common misconception, because a lot of people do think that we are just a free clinic, it's not like that. Most of our patients are hardworking members of the community, who don't make enough money to get, or I'm sorry, don't work for an organization that provides employment-based benefits, but they also make maybe too much to qualify for Medicaid, they're just right in that gap, or they have Medicaid and they just can't find a doctor anywhere, because it's very hard to find primary care physicians, or specialists even, who take Medicaid. We endeavor to keep, to get people healthy and keep them healthy, so they can continue to contribute to their communities and their families. It's an important part of our model, we're not just here to see someone that's sick and give them a shot and push them out the door. We focus very much on leveraging technology and electronic medical records in order to make sure patients are constantly screened, that they have their immunizations, and that we are improving their overall health so they can better contribute. Since 2016, we've seen a 10% increase in colorectal cancer screenings. We actually brought a giant blow-up colon to the event last year, and we're able to walk people and show them exactly what it is that you're detecting when you do that. It's one of the most easily preventable cancers, that a lot of people just don't understand how easy it is to go get your colonoscopy, or even do a simple test in the clinic. We've seen an 81% increase in weight screening and follow-up for children. That's really important, as we work on preventing things like diabetes. A 10% increase in cervical cancer screening, and we screen almost 100% of our patients for depression, and treat, of course. Care coordination is also a crucial part of what we do, so if a patient comes to our clinic, we don't just push them out the door and tell them, you need to go see a cardiologist, we walk them through the entire process. We find one that accepts their insurance, if they don't have insurance, we'll work with a safety net hospital like UMC, and we have a great relationship with North Oaks, of course, and we follow up, and we make sure that we get those results as well, because we want to make sure, as their primary care providers, that we are aware of their full spectrum of health. I perform a variety of duties for Access Health, but my biggest pleasure, like I mentioned, is doing this. I don't have to ask for anything, I just have to come here and tell you all the great work that we do. And the reason it's so important is because I know, I've worked in government, and I know how much people in communities look towards their local leaders for everything, and, you know, when one day someone does call you and say, I'm sick and I don't know where to go, or, you know, I'm a diabetic patient and I don't, I can't find a provider to treat me, all I ask is that you know that there is a resource for them in the community, whether they have insurance or not, we're always happy to see them. Our clinics can only thrive with the support of the community, and thus yours is invaluable. In the folders I handed out before the meeting, you'll find some information on the Tangier Parish Community Health Center, as well as a business card of mine in case you would like to come tour the clinic, or if you'd like to talk to me at all, or discuss any ideas. But, you know, I really just want to again reiterate that I appreciate the work that you all, that I just got to witness here, it's pretty cool, if I can be frank, and I wish you the best of luck, Garrett, and if there's anything that we can ever do for the community, please don't ever hesitate to reach out, I'll take any questions, of course.
So you do take referrals?
Yes, yes ma'am. And there should be a website on the business card as well, you can request an appointment on there, and someone will reach out to the patient and try and schedule them for an appointment. We're also a Medicaid application site as well.
I think you made a good point that a lot of people don't. I'm in the medical industry, so we have an RAC that we manage, so we're in the same space. But I think what you said, that some people may not realize, is that people between 100 and 138% of poverty are not eligible for Medicaid.
Mm-hmm.
So they have to buy off the exchange, and so if they can't afford to buy off the exchange, then they are uninsured.
And the subsidies...
So Medicaid isn't available for everybody, that 1 to 138 is the gap, and it happens to be a lot of people in our community that...
Yes, sir.
Are, and when you're talking FPL, federal poverty level, for two people, you're talking about $14,000 a year, so it's not like...
It's nothing.
It's not a lack that you're making, right.
Those people still have to pay hundreds of dollars a month, if they, even with the subsidies, and it's just, they just go to the emergency room because they don't have any insurance. I appreciate that you have a real health clinic.
Being the tax lady for the area, and I understand that this particular year, that question is supposed to come off the tax form, but I have a lot of people that I deal with, and it's good to know I give them all kind of information, whatever is available that I have, on various subjects, and healthcare is one of them, so that's why I asked you if you take referrals.
Yes, and also, community events, we always like to stay engaged, so if there are any events that you would like us to try and involve ourselves in, we're happy to, we have a mobile unit we can bring out, and we'll come take blood pressure and talk to individuals, and we're also not, for us, it's about having a medical home, so, you know, I've been working on a couple of innovative projects recently with some of the JDCs, the judicial district courts, and someone asked me, so you just want me to send everyone that walks out of a facility to you? And I said, no, we want them to go where their medical home is. So, you know, anyone can come to us, but we also work with other primary care providers, because we want people to go where it's best for them to receive their care.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, has everyone had a chance to review the minutes of July 24th? If so, entertain a motion. Second, roll call please.
Councilman Jason Hood.
Aye.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Councilman Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Councilman Mike Williams.
Aye.
Resolutions, no old business, new business, number one?
Number one, a resolution to approve your stop located at 408 Southwest Railroad Avenue, Hammond, Louisiana, to obtain a permit to sell high-low packaged alcohol. The owner is Your Stop Inc., Jenny Wilson.
Good afternoon. Got a lot of good information there. Okay, we have your stop that's come in, and it's over by where the old Price Wright used to be, kind of behind the fire station, across from Zumeri Park, and they're asking for packaged alcohol, they've met all the qualifications that we've asked them to do, and we're asking for approval tonight. We do have a representative here, would you like to come on up? And I think Mr. Sam's gonna help in here.
Tell me your name.
My name is Amar Jitsin. So I applied for a license for your stop.
We like to have all applicants for legal licenses come forward to council, so we make sure that you've been explained, you understand the laws as it relates to selling alcohol to minors. So do you understand that?
Alcohol 21.
Yes.
And, sorry, cigarette 18.
Right.
2,000.
Right, it's your responsibility, Kesh's responsibility is to ID, and we just want to let, you know, let new businesses especially know that the police will check you, and they will find you if they find that you're selling to under age.
Yes, sir, I know. I applied for, but I am waiting for you. Thank you. Thank you.
Motion to approve. Roll call please.
Councilman Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Councilman Jason Hood.
Aye.
Councilman Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved. Number two, a resolution to approve Pho Grace located at 2728 West Thomas Street, Suite B, Hammond, Louisiana, to obtain a permit to sell high-low alcohol on premise, Jenny Wilson.
This is for Pho Grace, that's been there for a while now, and I think they're doing really well, it's a good little Vietnamese restaurant, in fact, it was the first little Vietnamese restaurant we had to the area. And at this time, they're now wanting to be able to serve alcohol with their food, and they've met all the qualifications that we've asked them to meet as well, and we're asking for approval for them tonight as well. Danielle, I'm gonna have the owner come up, and if you have any questions or anything to ask her, she'd be happy to help you.
Good evening, my name is Danielle Nguyen. I'm here, I'm here on behalf of, this is Aubrey, my daughter. We're here on behalf of Pho Grace, first of all, we'd like to say thank you to the city of Hammond. We've been here a little bit over a year, and you guys have welcomed us into the community, and it, I'm gonna be, I'm gonna tell a little side story, I was actually diagnosed with cancer a month after we opened, and the customers became my family, because throughout my treatment, I'm in remission now, but throughout my treatment, all the customers would send me cards, it's unbelievable, we're from Los Angeles, so it's a big city, not everybody knows everyone, it's like, you know, you go by days at a time and you never say hi to anyone, but here, you guys have welcomed us, and we really wanted to say thank you. We look forward to being a part of this community for forever, if we could, but again, we just wanted to say thank you.
Yep, okay. Same scenario, we like to let all applicants for alcohol know the rules and the laws, you're familiar with those, I'd say.
Yes, and we have all of our servers taking their certification online, making sure that they know what to do and how to card everyone, and make sure that we're doing everything responsibly.
Well, we know your place several times, it's very good.
Thank you. We also cater for any kind of meetings, so we welcome you all to the restaurant. We're a very small family restaurant, but our food is amazing, everything's fresh, and look forward to seeing you at the restaurant. Thank you.
Second, roll call.
Councilman Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Councilman Mike Williams.
Aye.
Councilman Jason Hood.
Aye.
Motion approved. Number three, a resolution to authorize La Correto Restaurant to sell and serve alcohol on Friday, September 14th, 2018, from 1:00 p.m. until 10:30 p.m. at its 20th anniversary event, on the sidewalk in front of the restaurant located at 108 Northwest Railroad Avenue, Hammond, Louisiana. Miss Jane.
Hey, hi, City Council. Jane Brechker, 108 North Kate Street, Hammond, Louisiana. I'm gonna let Marina Rodriguez, she's the new manager, the restaurant, she's been planning this event, so I wanted to explain to you what's going on, and just come celebrate our 20th anniversary.
20 years, remember?
20 years, yes, absolutely. I was actually born and raised in Hammond, so this is home for me, as always. I've been going to La Correto since I was a child, and I dreamed of working there as a child, and I got my dream, and it came true, so this year, we're celebrating 20 years, so we're gonna have Groovy 7, not Groovy 7, I'm so sorry, that's Hot Dogs Nights, mind me. Mind me, so many big events coming up.
So you won't even be able to drink a margarita?
Absolutely not. Let everybody else enjoy themselves, but if anybody's interested in margaritas, we are there. The band is gonna be Funky Monkey, they're playing from 7 to 10, and we're gonna have a mariachi band walking around, playing their little instruments, and we'll have also some stuff for the kids, and we're out right after school, but other than that, that's our big bands going on. We are asking the permission to authorize us to sell and serve alcohol on the 14th of September, from 1:00 p.m. to 10:30 p.m. for the event in front of the sidewalk, right on the sidewalk in front of the restaurant, on the patio, and for an open container.
Motion to approve.
Councilman Jason Hood.
Aye.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Councilman Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Councilman Mike Williams.
Aye.[1799.35]
Motion approved. Number four, a resolution to authorize La Caressa to obtain a waiver of the open container law on Friday, September 14th, 2018, from 1:00 PM until 10:30 PM at its 20th anniversary event on the sidewalk in front of the restaurant located at 108 Northwest Railroad Avenue, Hammond, Louisiana.
Second.
Councilman Jason Hood.
Aye.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Councilman Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Councilman Mike Williams. Motion approved.
Thank you. See you all then.
Number five, a resolution authorizing Outdoorsman Helping Others, Inc., a local nonprofit organization, recognized as taxable under 501(c)(3) of the Internal Revenue Code, to sell beer from 4:00 PM until 10:30 PM on Saturday, September 22nd, 2018, at its 13th annual banquet fundraiser to be held at the Hammond Police Union Hall, located at 201 Natural Street, Hammond, Louisiana. Mr. Dave Townsend.
Good afternoon, Council. I think I'm gonna change my name.
What you gonna change it to?
Beer, man.
Is it that time of the year again?
I'm sorry.
Oh, well, you know, if we can't laugh at ourselves, who can we laugh at?
That's right.
Yeah, anyway, formality, you know, same deal, same song. Nothing's changed. We just need permission to, from y'all, to get our liquor permit from the state to legally be within the law to sell beer at the banquet.
Motion to approve.
Any questions? That's the easiest thing.
Councilman-
Cut and dry, let's get to the point here.
Councilman Jason Hood.
Aye.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard. Councilman Lamar Marshall. Councilman Mike Williams. Motion approved.
Thank y'all. And I'll be seeing you again soon. All right, thank y'all.
Thank you, Mr. Townsend. Number six, a resolution to approve budget change form 1903, transfer 130,000 from concrete street repairs FY 2019 to downtown parking improvements, project 42011711, Webb Anderson.
Should have the budget change form hyperlink. This item and the next one go hand in hand with each other. We had 130,000 for concrete street repairs and that was for North Holly and South Olive Street, concrete repairs. We want to add that to the current job, the downtown parking improvements, and also an area at the airport that needs to be paved for parking. So that's what this money's going towards.
So does the airport have its own budget for concrete repairs?
No.
Why would we put that, why are we putting, so we are, what are we repairing at the airport?
It's an aggregate parking area that we're paving. I think it's one of the only places that's still gravel parking out there.
Is it on the Capitol plan or?
No.
I don't get it. Yeah, I can help with this. There's a tenant that needs to be relocated because of safety issues and access issues. And that tenant had already concreted its parking area, so we're taking that away from them, replacing that with this parking area, which is now limestone. So we need to replace light con parking. They have concrete parking, we're replacing that with this space, which needs to be concreted. It is one of the few areas out there that's not. So this is part of a tenant relocation at the airport.
So what portion of this is actually for the airport, the dollar amount?
If you scroll down on your hyperlink, I think it's all in one file. You have this.
No, we just, okay, let me see. Are we, yeah, okay.
It may be with the next one. It looks just like this. It says change order worksheet on top of it.
Yeah, so where is it, where does it show the-
I'll just, I'll give you the, the airport does the six inch thick paving, item number 12, $38,000. You have to go all the way to the right side.
38, 368.
38, 368. So that's parking area. When we do parking, we do six inch paving. The rest of it is an eight inch paving for the streets downtown.
Where is the park, Councilor, Mr. Vice President? Where's the park in downtown that this is gonna go into?
We're doing, well, we did the parking lot at the Michael J. Kenny Center. We did some improvements on North Spruce Street. Actually, they're doing those now. And then we're doing parking on Morris Street, West Morris, just across the street from the Steakhouse.
Yeah.
Parallel parking. That was the original project.
And in order to keep the same pricing, the addendum is done, is that correct? As far as the same pricing from the company that's doing the work?
They've already agreed to do it for the same price. You had the money allocated, you had a little more than you needed actually allocated once we did the survey of the streets, North Holly and South Olive. So you've got enough to do the airport parking also with a little extra contingency.
So I know we had bid like $645,000 in the budget for the hangars and it came out to 608, so there was $45,000 left. Why wouldn't we just use money already allocated to the airport to fund this project versus? Because are there other concrete repair projects in the city that we need to consider? Or are we, you know, I guess it's a question I'm asking the mayor, do you?
Well, we may be using that $600,000 for the pool or something else.
All that money-
Lacey's telling you no, so she has to, she said no.
All that money was in last fiscal year and so at the end of the fiscal year, it was only single fiscal year money. So all that money has expired and-
In the general fund.
Right.
It's 645?
There's not money set aside for the airport for this fiscal year. That was money set aside last fiscal year for the airport hangar, one of the hangar roofs and for the 10 hangars.
So if it's not used, it doesn't have the same three-year sunset rule as a capital project?
Correct, because it was in the sales tax fund, 203. It was not placed in capital outlay, 420 or 616 underwater and so.
So, but it's still $645,000 regardless, right?
I don't know if it's that much, I don't know.
But that's what we initially-
I understand what you initially did, but we did do the hangar roof that had to be repaired. I don't know what the total was that came back.
Basically, it's in the general fund and so is the revenue that comes from the airport, reverts back to the-
It's in the fund balance. So it's in the general, it's in the sales tax fund balance.
So again, why would we, so do we have any other repairs or any other needs for concrete repairs within the city that we can allow that money to stay in that budget for those things and maybe, or either add to that by reducing the general fund by the 38,000 since we have the money in there from the airport? I'm just asking this question, I mean I-
You don't have the money in the general fund from the airport. The money is in the sales tax fund.
Well, in the sales tax-
And it would have to be go through, you're certainly able to do that. You could take, you could introduce an ordinance to take the fund balance and then you could go through and pass an ordinance for $38,000 worth of parking.
Then we can leave money in the concrete fund because, you know, if we don't do it this year, we still have a council that's gonna be here in January for another six months that might have, might see some other needs, so. Versus absorb, using that money now, it seems to me like we would. And this is the stuff that we get like right before, not too long before the meeting, so. I'm having to ask the questions, I didn't get a chance to ask any questions before. But I would think that it would make sense to just use the, if you have the money in the general fund, you know, why wouldn't you just take it from the general fund and leave this money?
It's not in the general fund.
Or in the sales tax.
It's in the fund balance.
My bad.
So it's gonna require an introduction of an ordinance and a final passage of an ordinance.
Just what I'm saying, why wouldn't we just take the money from the, you know, leave the concrete funds there? Because, I mean, unless we have other projects, unless you're saying there are no other projects that we need to use that for, why would we just, just, why would we leave that? Why, we should leave that there, I would think, for other concrete projects, you know?
I mean, the parking lot can be considered concrete.
So what would be the difference if we needed the funds for another project and we went into the fund balance?
Well, I mean, if we have money in the concrete account, I mean, budget, I thought that that's all done through capital projects, right?
I'm not understanding your question.
So, I don't have my book in front of me because I didn't get my book updated yet. That's my fault. But isn't that a part of the capital project?
There is one concrete streets category in the capital projects and there's sidewalk money in the capital projects.
Right, and this is coming out of concrete?
That's in concrete, yes.
Which is in the capital budget.
Correct.
So, but all capital dollars are allocated? Unless it's miscellaneous.
You mean appropriated or you mean, you mean for each fiscal year?
Appropriately allocated, yes.
To specific projects?
Yes.
Yes, what we're able to achieve with this is a cost savings because not only are we doing what you allocated the funding to for the two streets that are discussed, but you're doing an additional 38,000 worth of work to be done, which settles a lease-tenant agreement.
And the reason you can do that is because of the prices we got on the downtown parking job.
Okay.
We do an original estimate and then once we do plans, we have exact quantities and that's what we've done and you have leftover money.
Mr. Vice President, there is a agreement that we must provide these people with concrete parking now that we've moved them out for safety reasons?
Yes.
That's interesting.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Councilman Jason Hood.
Aye.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Councilman Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Councilman Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved. Number seven, a resolution to approve change order number one on downtown parking improvements, project 42011711, adding concrete street repairs on North Holly and South Olive and adding parking paving at Hammond Airport.
This, we have two more items that were outlined. This, I already showed you the worksheet and this is official change order. Request approval, it's an increase of $107,541.50 and an increase of 60 days to the contract for the additional work. Ma'am?
This is the savings if we do it this way?
Right, it's part of a larger project, you've got good prices. That's why we have the extra money that I just spoke about.
Second.
Councilman Jason Hood.
Aye.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Councilman Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Councilman Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
Number eight, a resolution to approve preliminary subdivision requests by Landrick Real Estate for Covington Ridge subdivision in accordance with preliminary plan and construction plans by McClain Taylor, Inc., dated July 25th, 2018. Approved with conditions by the Planning Commission. Condition number one, infrastructure must be completed within one year in accordance with UDC. Number two, landscape plan provided. Number three, entrance with sign retention pond with fountain, park or playground area and fence install all in accordance with renderings and construction plans. And number four, final approval of sewer plans by Sewer District, Tracy Shalacy.
Good afternoon, Council. This is a major subdivision that's already been approved by the Planning Commission with the conditions that Tanya read out to you. These conditions are being worked on as we speak. They're working on landscape plan. They've already given us renderings of these areas of this subdivision for the green space. This is the only subdivision in the city limits that will have a walk-in trail. It's a great amenity to this particular subdivision. It's 17 and a half acres, located off of Old Covington Highway. And they're awaiting their sewer plans to be approved by the Sewer District, which I believe is on August 20th. And like I said, this has already been approved by Planning Commission, so they just want your blessing to begin construction.
We have a walking trail in Jackson Park and Lincoln Park in that subdivision.
Okay, great. It could have been on that staff report. A glitch in our system.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Jason Hood.
Aye.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Councilman Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Councilman Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved. Number nine, a resolution to approve preliminary subdivision requests by Red LLC for Cypress Crossing in accordance with preliminary plan and construction plans by WMJ Bowden Jr. dated August 2nd, 2018. Provided, approved with conditions by the Planning Commission. Condition number one, infrastructure must be completed within one year in accordance with UDC. Tracy Shalacy.
This is also a major subdivision with some new infrastructure that they'll be installing on a much smaller scale, three and a half acres, located on South Cypress Street. This property was owned by a previous owner and then taken back by the bank. So this is a great investment in redeveloping this property. They have one year to construct the infrastructure and then come back to you guys for acceptance.
Second.
Councilman Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Councilman Jason Hood.
Aye.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Councilman Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Thank you so much.
Louis Postick, 112 Elm Drive, Hammond.
Mr. Vice President, come up to Mike, please.
You said the address is Cypress Street, Tracy.
It's actually behind Cypress Street.
Yeah, it's not on Cypress.
Yeah, they're gonna extend East Park Avenue and actually build a whole new street.
So, will that be a problem? I mean, this is-
Right now, they own the property and that's the temporary address on Cypress to access that rear property. There's no actual address as of yet.
Okay, is it the same address as those houses along Cypress in front of?
No, it's actually, when those houses start on Cypress, there is a East Park-
That little strip that nobody could do anything with?
Yes, ma'am.
I know what you're talking about.
That address would start at 520. And that's where that address came from.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
That's really strange.
It's strange, yeah, thank you.
Number 10, a resolution one, accepting a $46,200 traffic safety grant from the Louisiana Highway Safety Commission for overtime DWI, juvenile underage drinking and occupant protection enforcement. And two, authorizing the mayor or his designated to complete and sign grant documents, Charles Brocher.
This is the grant that we receive, we've been very fortunate to receive every year. I understand that this year, we're receiving the same amount we received last year. Typically, what happens is we receive a letter of award and then there's a period of time that we wait for the contract to come in so that we can go ahead and execute that contract without having to come back to the council. We're gonna go ahead and ask you to approve that. There is no match on this. $46,200 is what we'll receive.
Make a motion to approve. Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Jason Hood.
Aye.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Councilman Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Councilman Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved. Number eleven, a resolution one, accepting a twenty thousand dollar community partners grant from Keep America Beautiful and Lowe's for improvements to K Street Park. And two, authorizing the mayor or his designated to sign to complete and sign grant documents. Charles brochure.
This is the grant that the mayor mentioned, I think, at the last council meeting. Uh, we had thought we would have a contract by now, we're still waiting for that contract, but again, so that we're not having to come back to the council if we receive the contract tomorrow and have to wait two weeks, we're just asking for your approval. I will be coming back once we have gone through the process of identifying what, what the playground's gonna look like and what the cost is gonna be, and we're gonna bid it out and get quotes and all that sort of thing. We'll come back, and at that point, we'll know what the match will be. Um, obviously, we're not gonna be able to build an entire playground for twenty thousand dollars.
We can some changes to stuff that was too close to the fence? So we redoing the whole playground?
We're looking at a couple of different options right now. Um, one is, the, the goal would be to put new playground equipment in the park as well as address concerns about the existing playground not meeting current playground safety standards. Uh, the standards have changed in the ten-plus years since that con, that, uh, existing playground was constructed. So it would involve possibly moving some equipment around to comply with the current.
And where would those funds come from?
The matching funds?
No, I mean, does, does this require a match?
Th- this does not per se require a match, but we know that there will be additional funds required to.
So where would they, where would they come from?
More than likely the grant match fund, or possibly some other grants that we're working on.
So we would take grant match money when we are not having to match a grant to pay for the project? I'm missing, maybe I'm just confused, you could.
Typically, when we do a playground, we'll, we'll have a budget in mind, and we'll, we'll say, okay, if the playground's gonna cost sixty thousand dollars, the match will be forty thousand dollars. At this point, simply because this is that grant that we had applied for that we really didn't think we were gonna get, we kind of applied for it because the timing was right, um, and we did get it. Um, we're actually getting the, the grant award, and, and we're waiting on the contract, but we'll have that before we've actually finalized what the, the new equipment and new playground will.
I'm not against, you know, building a park and Kate's Park, but what you're saying doesn't make any sense, Charles, because if we approve, uh, you know, typically for the seven, how you as everyone accounts, we will say, we're getting a, a grant from Lowe's with a match of, and we would approve those together. But you're saying there is no match for this grant, but yet you want us to, at some point, approve match dollars to do the project.
There.
Is that what you, is that, am I saying that right?
Can, can I pipe in?
Sure.
Mr. Vice President, Councilman Marshall, I've been feverishly after more equipment for the, uh, for the park.
I'm for it, yeah.
So what I'm gonna propose is, is we take this money, and we would get money from the sales tax fund or the general fund, or that he, I think he's just reaching out saying that we could get it from this fund, but that's what I will wind up proposing.
And I support the project, I just wanna.
Yes, sir.
I'm just saying, why would we say the, I'm just trying to get it clear, what you were saying, we're gonna take it from them, because, because there are other grants that will, the, the match is, is for.
All of our playground grants in the past have come from the grant match fund. So you're correct. Usually what happens is once we get one of the grants in, then we put forward the match requirements at that point. There is not a match requirement on this grant. What Charles is still exploring is the budget for the grant. We're working with the D D G Design Committee to understand their desires for that space and with Councilman Hood. So in putting all that together, what we're asking is to go ahead and accept this grant, knowing that Charles will come back to you in the next few weeks with the full budget put together, and at that time, we'll request where the matching funds can come from and how much that match will be.
That sounds, that sounds whatever.
I apologize if I didn't explain that clearly, yeah. We'll be coming back to, there will be no movement on this, we're just, we're basically allowing the mayor to sign the contract when it arrives. Uh, but certainly I'll be coming back to the council once we have a more concrete idea of what we're gonna do, asking for your approval to move forward.
Well, yeah, okay, that's fine. You answered my, my question.
Second.
Councilman Jason Hood.
Aye.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Councilman Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Councilman Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved. Number twelve, a resolution supporting the submission of an eighteen thousand, three hundred and twenty-six dollar federal justice assistant grant application, application to purchase a radio equipment for the Hammond Police Department. Charles brochure.
I think the last time I was here, we were accepting the grant for our two thousand seventeen JAG. Uh, on the heels of that, literally days on the heels of that, we received word that we were receiving a two thousand and eighteen allocation of eighteen thousand, three hundred and twenty-six dollars. These are monies that are allocated us every year based on our crime statistics, our demographic data, et cetera. I've spoken with the chief, uh, he knows he's gonna be having, having to purchase some radio equipment in the very near future to replace equipment that's being phased out by the vendor, um, so he wants to put this money toward new radio equipment. There is no match on this one, there will not be a match on this one, this is eighteen thousand, three hundred and twenty-six dollars that can go toward the radio purchase.
Second.
Councilman Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard. Councilman Jason Hood.
Aye.
Councilman Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved. Number thirteen, a resolution reaffirming and updating the city of Hammond's residential anti-displacement and relocation assistance plan originally adopted July fifteen, two thousand and eight, affirmed September tw- twentieth, two thousand and eleven, and reaffirmed May fifth, two thousand and fifteen for fiscal year two thousand and eighteen Louisiana Community Development Block Grant Program. Charles brochure.
Both this resolution and the next relate to our pending, uh, we've been awarded the funds, we're going through the process of clearing contract conditions, there are certain requirements we have to meet before they'll actually sign the contract and award us the funds. These are the funds for the sewer system infiltration and inflow correction work out there between, uh, Thomas and, um, Palmetto, Mooney, and Morrison, um, that area. These anti-displacement, uh, relocation assistance plan and the community development plan, they're components of the application. We do these every, every time we get a, an L C B G grant. And there were attachments, I think, on the agenda if there were any questions or if you wanted to see what they look like.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Jason Hood.
Aye.
Councilman Mike Williams.
Aye.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Councilman Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Motion approved. Number fourteen, a resolution adopting a community development plan for the fiscal year two, two thousand and eighteen Louisiana Community Development Block Grant Program. Charles brochure.
Similar to the other one, this is a three-year plan as required by L C B G that we update every time we receive an L G, L C D B G. Um, we both, it, it talks about projects and programs that we've done in the past, uh, as well as things that we have planned for the future. Um, it's a longer document, um, it was also attached.
Mm-hmm. Motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Jason Hood.
Aye.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Councilman Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Councilman Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
Number fifteen, a resolution to authorize the mayor to enter into contract with Soft Choice Corporation in the amount of fifty-one thousand, five hundred and fourteen dollars and eighty-six cent annually for Microsoft licenses and software. Jenna Thurman.
Our current contract expires at the end of this month, so we put RFP nineteen fifteen out for Microsoft Enterprise Agreement. We did receive two proposals, the lowest was Soft Choice, so we're just asking for approval to enter into contract.
So moved.
Councilman Jason Hood.
Aye.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Councilman Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Councilman Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved. Number sixteen, a resolution to reaffirm Stanley Young to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a four-year term, August fourteenth, two thousand and eighteen to June fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, Mayor Panapinto.
Uh, Stanley's been with us for many years, done a great job and requests that you approve the four-year term.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Jason Hood.
Aye.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Councilman Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Councilman Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved. Final adoption of ordinance, number one, final adoption of an ordinance to authorize the mayor to enter into a purchase agreement, active sale, and related documents with Anthony Investments LLC for the purchase of one zero seven of Cherry Street for the price of two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Councilman Jason Hood.
Aye.
Councilman Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Councilman Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved. Introduction of ordinance is set for public hearing. Introduction of an ordinance to declare a surplus and authorize the sale of the items listed below to the gov, on govdeals.com. Jenna Thurman.
Motion to introduce.
Let's see, we have to have an amendment.
Yes. Um, previously, I had come before council and asked for permission to donate a restraint chair to a potential parish sheriff's office. They have decided that they no longer want the chair, so I'm asking if we can amend the budget to, I mean, the agenda to add the restraint chair to the GovDeals surplus property.
Second.
Councilman Jason Hood.
Aye.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Councilman Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Councilman Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion to introduce.
Second.
Okay, now we need to go back.
Yeah, they just moved to.
Yeah.
Introduce it with the amendment.
Okay. We going back.
We're two seconds.
Yeah, because what they, what we do.
We amended it.
Amendment to add, to add the chair.
Now we going back to the surplus, okay.
As amendment.
Okay.
Marshall and Janice Carter Beard.
Okay, Councilman Jason Hood.
Aye.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Councilman Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Councilman Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion to introduce. Public hearing is set for August twenty eighth.
He's just messing.
Yeah.
Motion to adjourn.
Let's do it.
I'll say.